Okay, we're gonna get started. It's 5:30. I'd like to welcome everybody coming out to the city charter, other form of public city council. And we've got some visitors here tonight. I'd like to recognize Lynn Phillips, regional agent of the governor's office. He's here with the governor. And, okay, I'll go after our city clerk. A sudden, you call the old place.
Here. Here. Here.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. The next meeting, again, we had an agenda. It's a public meeting. You'll be able to ask questions, come forth to the microphone. We ask that you stick your name, your address, and we got to stick to the agenda items in the city charter. So this is going to be communication back and forth. So any questions you want to ask about the charter is fine. So at this time, I'm going to turn over to Mr. Tim Scherito. I've been just got quite a few years ago in my travels throughout the state to different meetings and conferences. This is smart guy who knows about city charters. Hope he can help us, sir. Unless anyone objects, I think I'm out of the drop radius here. And I'm plenty loud anyways, my sons will tell you so. Too concerned if you can't hear me raise your hand. Well, we leave our open meeting objectives, which is the first line. You have copies of these. We're going to describe the project we're working on, which is a charter amendment. And we'll discuss some alternatives that the council, the topics that the council has assigned us specifically to discuss. And our goal here is to get feedback from you, your comments, for the mayor and council so that they can then contribute their deliberations on the charter amendment. My email contact is up there. I invite anyone who asks questions or concerns that don't occur until later, you're welcome to drop me an email. I'll respond, and of course, I'll include it at the city. I'll include Jessica on that as well, so we can have a good lot of communications. So don't worry if you don't forget, or you don't think about something until later, please use my email, and I'll be happy to get back to you as soon as possible. Just a little bit about myself. I'm in my third decade as a lawyer in West Virginia, and I'm very proud of it in the sense that all my work is for public service. I did dabble in some litigation when I began to realize my calling was to work with city councils, utility boards, public service districts, and help people succeed together. It's my passion. I have experience in city charter amendments from all over the state and a lot of different city operations that I've been lucky enough to participate in. So I bring some background with me. Having said that, I'm not here as an advocate for any particular option or choice. I'm here to facilitate a full discussion, give council all the information they desire could want to help them toward a conclusion. In the end, our goal is to have a city charter, which is the next slide. And I want to say, this is not hyperbole to say that what we're doing here is historic. Why do I say that? Well, to look at, I spent the morning again reading the 1911 city charter, and it occurred to me that somebody back in 1911 wrote that. Did they think that somebody in 2020 would be looking at every sentence, every problem, every paragraph? Maybe so that's how we should be thinking, that somebody in 2120 is going to look at the work we've done here and decide whether it's good for the city. So this is, in fact, historic and significant. That doesn't mean that anything we do can't be changed, modified, we can learn as we go. This is not a one-shot attempt. Council has the power to make changes as we go forward. But certainly, it is historic and important. Your presence here shows that you understand that. What is the city charter? What describes the corporate being of the city? It is the constitution, if you will, of the city. Or in a business sense, it would be articles of incorporation for a company. That's what a charter is. So it's central to the governance of the city. It is our foundation document. Now, the charter tells us what we should do, what we can do, and what we aspire to. So it's a very complex and multi-dimensional document where we are voicing, the city government's voicing back to the people, here's our promise to you as how we're going to run the city. So the charter describes the form, how the city is governed. More importantly, it facilitates citizen participation. So the charter's got to be readable. What we want is any citizen to open up the, go to the internet, open up the charter, and understand what the rules are, understand what the promises made are, and what the obligation of city government is back to its citizens. So really, the foundation, the whole purpose of a city charter is to create and maintain civic confidence so we can work together to achieve things as a city. Without confidence in the city government, without a clear understanding of how it's supposed to run, people then lose confidence. And I see it in cities all over the state, and here you have it, all over the country, where city governments have lost their credibility. One way to maintain the credibility is the state clearly what the rules are and how the city is operating, so that every citizen can understand, every citizen can participate in a meaningful way. And I think I speak for council to say that's a positive desire, is to make sure that democracy works out against the way it's supposed to work. That's what we're trying to do with this charter. Now, I noticed, you know, talking about the history of our charters, 1911 charter that we're working on today, there was no statement about ethics. So in the 20th century, early 20th century, open government law was not even contemplated. Now, the things that we're going to talk about tonight, the ethical standards that this city for pounds and will hold itself to are novel, in the sense that 1911, they didn't talk about it. I don't think they thought about it. So again, this is why what we're doing here today is so important. So the objectives of the project that the city council signed are to consider ending, clarifying, and simplifying the charter. There, and we'll talk more in specifics in a few minutes, there are redundant provisions, there are unconstitutional provisions, there are, again, turgid pros, things that make citizens frustrated, I'm not going to go hard on the word, it just makes the government know we want to make this clear play modern language and integrate it with the state law. Part of the project, of course, is to consider how the city is governed, the form of governance. We'll talk more about that this evening. That's another thing, city specific, their city council specifically tasks us to do, teach us, us being myself and city staff, teach us about these different alternatives and how other cities in the state operate, so that they can have a clearer picture. And I think, I hope council agrees that after the several months we've been working on this, that they now have a pretty clear picture about other cities in the state and their business. We're also going to look at the city charter, because it is about governance of how the elections are conducted, when they're conducted. All of this, again, to the touchstone, the centerpiece of the city government, which is civic confidence, the ability of citizens to understand what we're going to do. And those are in our project goals, which is the next slide. We want to high-buck to democracy, we want fully engaged and informed citizens. We also want the city to be managed and managed efficiently. Let's not forget, this is a $5.5 million enterprise. $5.5 million a year runs through this city budget. And so this is a significant and sophisticated $5.5 million enterprise. Forget about government, it is an organization that's responsible for that amount of money and responsible to 7,000 citizens here in Elkins. That's even tougher than running a business, because not only do you have to turn a profit, you've got to be concerned about responsible, fair government. We also talked about normalizing the city government here in Elkins with the rest of the state. Why is that important? Well, what we're trying to build across the state is the cadre of professional municipal employees and understand how other cities do business through the courts. So for instance, we have a large body of legal precedents about how a city is supposed to run through the city manager model. We have a large body of precedents about how the city is supposed to run through a strong mayor. There are all these other experiences cities have. So we don't have to be out here on our own recreating your wheel. One of the great things that they say about our federal government is the states are all laboratories of democracy. We learn from each other. It's the same with cities. We learn from each other, we're mutually supportive, but what we want to do is get on the same sheet of music of the state code, of the ever going to the city of the state, so we move forward together and develop ways, in fact, in business of local government in West Virginia. Of course, quality, responsible service to our citizens, our businesses, and in the end, what we're about, as government Aristotle talked about 3,000 years ago, we're here to maintain and improve the quality of life for our citizens. If we can't do that, we really don't have a government. So that's the end goal always of city government. Next slide, I'll show you is the topics for tonight. Now, when you discuss city government, it is a bid. It's not complicated, but it's complex. There are all kinds of different inputs and things that we can talk about. And what I've discovered in doing this for the last three decades, if you go in talking about one over the world, it gets confused, and you know, we spiral into a non-productive discussion. So what I'd like to suggest tonight is that we parse out our discussion in the sense that we're going to talk about three major areas of the charter or of city government. And after I talk briefly about each one of these three areas, I'll pause, so I'm teeing up the discussion, and the mayor and council will invite you to come up and say whatever you want about that area. And doesn't mean you can't come back up later and talk about the second and third areas. But what we're trying to do is organize our thoughts and organize your input so that we have a clear collection of cogent helpful facts. So that's why, if it's okay with you, we'll do this in three pieces. And we'll pause after we've finished three, and invite you to come forward and say whatever you want to do. As the mayor said, identify yourself and your address, and then make your comments accountable. And then, well, we'll just flag that while your comments, and council will continue the preparation of this issue. So unless there's any objections to that approach, I hope you agree it makes sense, and it may make for the most productive meeting. Okay, all right. So let's start with conduct and governance. The first thing I'll talk about is the fiscal, and here's the city finance officer, Tracy that, who's here, has been most helpful. What we try to do is the financial part is to make sure that we've documented our process, our budget process, and our fiscal management tools. Why? Now, hopefully, every citizen of Elkins can open that charter and read and understand how I participated in the budget process, how it comes and deliberates, how they manage the budgets, and here goes forward. So I think as you see the fiscal part of this, if you look at the old 1911 charter, there are some provisions for the budget process. We're proposing a clear, detailed description so that our citizens can understand. Fiscal year from July to June. And we've also now defined the budget process by dates, when the finance committee's got to have the budgets gathered for council, when council's got to act on that draft. All those things, again, promote, I mean, council goes out and do that, finance officers go out and do that. We want you to know how that works, so that you can participate and understand. We've clearly defined how the operations budget works, how the capital budget works, how the capital programs work. None of that is defined in the charter. So again, if you have an interest in the city making a capital investment, which is an investment, a long-term investment, if it's building, you will now understand how that works in the city just by reading the charter. So I think very useful changes for the fiscal part of the charter amendments. On the elections, central and fundamental to how democracy works, of course, now that the elections are first Tuesday and Marches, this charter amendment proposes to make that the second Tuesday in June. Is that right? Now, we propose second Tuesday in June, rational, make the weather's better. We're always trying to promote more citizen participation, so we think that if it's a better weather, we're going to get more candidates walking through their wards, more citizens coming out to vote. So I hope you agree that makes sense. Each odd number here, which is the way the charter is now, will continue in an odd partisan fashion, my goodness, it just eliminates exponential amount of useless paper. So Elkins' fathers, mothers, wives, it's an income change. But what we've also done is eliminate a lot of superfluous detail in the 1911 charter, because it's uncovered in the West Virginia code. So what we've said now, we're following the West Virginia law as to how elections are administered. Why is that useful? Because, again, a body of court precedent arises out of that law. We get advisory opinions from the attorney general. We see how elections are being conducted with these rules and statements. So we think it makes a lot of sense to simplify, just close down on the state rules. That's all we talked through the West Virginia government. The other section in the conference, personally, for discussion tonight is ethics. And again, there was no comment about ethics in 1911, and I hope that we all feel strong enough now to make these statements. Now, we're absolutely committed to open government. Now, again, you could have just said we're following the state law on ethics. But I think what the sense I got from your counsel is, let's make these strong statements that a citizen can rely on. We're absolutely committed to open government. That doesn't mean that we're going to ignore the Sunshine Act, because there are some exemptions. That's for protection of private business or privacy of people. Those are, again, state laws, so we will make those rules up, obey the state law, which is preferences, of course, to disclosure, subject to the council rules. So a clear and strong statement about open government, a clear and strong statement about anti-discrimination. So we are saying, not only that we're going to follow the federal state law, but we also believe that discrimination in any, and you see, all the suspect categories listed in the draft, we reject all of them. And we're going to put that in our charter, so that everybody understands how you feel about it. Anti-pay-for-play, no ifs, all those prohibitions are part of a large body of fraud law and the ethics code of the state. But again, we're making those statements as ethics statements here in our city charter, so that everybody understands and we take this seriously. The only other nuance in the charter that is not part of the state code, as we're asking ethics, is the dual office problem. I have a client whose mayor wanted to serve a city manager. Is that permissible? Well, no. And under our charter, it's not permissible unless council specifically authorize. So dual offices, where the elected are appointed, are not permissible under this charter, again, unless council authorizes. I mean, they're maybe. That we have to do that for short or long term, so we've given the council that flexibility. The last is that no solicitation, city employees, which this charter absolutely protects your city employees from any involvement in elections. Now, they can, of course, vote and voice their private opinions on their private time, but they can't do solicited donations or otherwise actively participate in criminal campaigns. I hope you agree that these provisions, the governance provisions, are not controversial and desirable. But I'll pause there, as I promised, I'll flip this podium around, and if anybody wants to talk about this portion of the presentation, council and mayor are willing to hear your comments. If I'll spin it around a little. Anybody want to comment on what I've just discussed, the governance issues we're on?
Yeah, my name is Mike Allen. I'm a big linebacker for the state of Elkins, West Virginia. I just have a question, kind of, it's a proposal to codify the budget process. Is codifying, is by a torrent of channels, we're going to, codifying, maybe we're codified for the budget process.
Let me answer that, okay, very interesting. That's an excellent question, sir. What we mean by codify the budget process is that the citizens will see in the charter how the budget is proposed and how it is developed. As far as the internal workings and accounting, every citizen is allowed and available to review any of those budget categories, but we didn't drill down into that kind of region. Yes, sir. With their, for council, please, please.
So what's the benefit of having a brief standing election, suppose, to have a city election, the state general, is probably, should call you the ballots that you have?
Jessica and I spend a lot of time discussing this, and she's better qualified than me to answer the question, but my chief advisor asked me to.
Sure. There's some difficulties, maybe.
So let me, the question was whether we should, what are the advantages and disadvantages to collapsing our elections into accounting or the general election, or whether the election will continue down the second?
So there's a couple of challenges with it. You could potentially save a little bit of money by rolling the elections together, relying on the county to help manage the elections. You're only hiring election officials, you know, for one time a year as opposed to for separate elections. However, because our ward lines do not align with district lines, it's going to cause more confusion than already exists. If you've gone into the polling place during an election, you realize that the election officials already have to, you know, work from books for that particular ward, they could have multiple districts within them. So they're having to make sure, be very thorough, to make sure that that voter is in the correct board, and if not, trying to determine what ward they're in, and then what district they're in, to make sure that they, you know, they're able to vote. So that causes a lot of difficulty. And I think it would be even more difficult, you would be, the number of ballots that you would have to print would just be, I think, very significant compared to what it is now, where we have five wards, we have five separate ballots. If you ask the county to do that, if they're holding a district election and a ward election at the same time, they would have to have, I can't even imagine how many ballots, because if they came in to vote, their vote had to be counted in that district, and it had to be counted in that ward, they would, you know, each one would have to have probably upwards of five or more ballots. The other potential controversy I see is just the fact that we are a nonpartisan election, and the county elections, the state elections, the national elections are partisan. And so you're really incorporating those two things. If you want us to remain a nonpartisan body, I think it's important to keep those separate. Yes, if you were right on the border in your district, or late, which happens frequently, the districts do not align with our ward lines at all, not inside or outside.
Can you repeat the question, what is your question, council?
Oh, sure. The question was, why not align our city elections with the county, state, national elections? Like, why not put them in November?
I heard that, I heard her answer.
Oh, her follow-up question was about if you were along the borders, municipal border, the city border, and it's the same argument, that you could have a district that would fall inside the city in part, and then partly outside the city. So it would take a lot of, we would have to know every individual address, house, some of these properties cross those borders, so it would be very difficult to reach that.
I have a general question, but.
Mike, you can.
Yeah. Okay, Mike, I'll say, if you have to talk through that, we all can listen to you. I've just got a general question about the presidency. Because I prepared my notes based on the PDF pertaining to each section, and the way you are doing the speaking, you want me to keep it on topic. I'm having problems looking at your board and relating the few sections of the PDF, because my objections are based on that PDF section, and I don't know really what all the sections are being discussed. You thought of the question?
Yes, excellent question. So the question was, and the observation, we could have better organized this by indexing it back to the sections. Some different comparisons, actually, what I propose is, if at the end of our three areas of discussion, you still have issues, that we can just open it up and let the position can, if that makes sense, please, sir. Remember, I gave you.
Yeah, I don't know.
We want everybody to have all their say, that's.
Before I start, my name is Alan, I'm a living tourist, same for you, from Elkins. I'm hoping saying 23 people who are working here, have some petition, I don't object to give it to this pastor, and he's. And the question I have is on the elections, about the candidacy, so if I got this correct, it's a municipal primary, and the candidacy to the municipal, this I need to do the election.
You don't have a primary?
Well, not a primary, you have a candidacy. So it says council members, so if you got, so the current system we're at, so we've got five members running, if they can sit on the campus board if they're running for reelection?
Yes, sir, that's the statute of state law.
The statute of state law?
Yes.
Okay, that be discussed, possibly changed? Is that seen in the conflict there? To sit on the campus board and get ready for reelection?
I don't know if that's something that could be in the statute of state law or not, it has to be, that's, it's not.
I mean, why couldn't the county commission the candidacy for the city? Because by law, I think they can't. Because by law, I think they can't, they can't leave the campus.
I'll look at it, it's not me, so I'll look at it, that's really, the campus board. So your question or your observation is, could we have a different board than the city council, the citizen board?
Well, I think it would be acceptable to have maybe five council members that are on for reelection sections, but at the current time, when you're running for reelection, I don't think it should sit on the board.
Yes, sir, we have to look at that, put back. So, during, the question was, the candidacy board right now is city council.
Right.
And this gentleman feels that's, that's, that we should consider a different candidacy board, maybe half city council, half citizens.
But why would you do that? I mean, the county commission is, the county commission is their board to make this, for the county or.
Oh, I mean, that needs change, too.
And that is by, that's by state law.
Well, I understand, okay, but also, then say, oh, I think the candidacy board would be changed, if you've got five council members running for reelection. And I'm not saying that, it's just, it's not a good look, and it's also, I don't think that it is, what if you have a dispute?
What if you have a.
Let's say one of the council members is running against someone, and the candidacy board has certified the election, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so they're going to be involved in that process?
If there's a conflict with regard to that particular question, they will not participate. And that has happened in the past.
Why not?
But as it is now, it's the state law that, if it's city elections, city council, they are the government's body, you would have to have a change in state law, as far as I'm concerned.
You would have to have a change in state law, as far as I'm concerned, about doing that. And there is a case that recently went in the entire way to the Supreme Court with regard to an election over in the Eastern Panhandle with regard to some disputed ballots. But that council in that case of that city was who was the campus was. And that is the state law. I mean, I don't think that's something we can change in a charter. And looking at it in that regard, frankly, I'm a little confused about why you think it's a problem if the person that may be an issuer, there is a tie or whatever, that they just don't participate.
Well, can I ask you a question, Mr. Mayor? We've got the reasons, sir, and I will provide a reasoned response to Jessica.
Oh, boy, yes. Why did you choose the five remaining members of the council?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. About the issue. The question is, what does state law allow us to do? That's what, you deserve citation or case that you can read yourself. I'll be... Sir, Mr. Mayor, I have a objection to that. I have, I'll talk about this in a reasonable fashion. Unless there's any other discussion of these two points, we'll move to the next discussion topic. Which is the next line? Let's see, multi-passing. So the next, the next area of discussion, we've broadened the topic, there are a ton of councils and mayor. And we're looking at the size of city councils. What size do we, how many councils do we have to be effective and responsive to the city, to the citizens of the city? Is it 10? That's what the city charter, obviously, 1911, continues to narrow to per ward. The other issue is, finding and retaining qualified candidates to serve as volunteers in public service. And it is... So those questions are council's weight against the size. And then how is council formed? Do we continue a two-per-ward? Do we continue a ward representation dog? Do we open it up broadly to at-large representation? The idea being, with 7,000 citizens in that large council, really can understand that not all the rules. It's not as if we have to look at the first word to understand what the first word is. So the questions are, okay, size of council, and how council is formed? Either by the words or at-large or combinations? We're working on it. Let me just possibly say something on the draft. It's just like this discussion tonight. If you just start talking in the abstract, and it goes off into the, nobody really gets anywhere. So we have a draft, you've all seated, it's posted. That's not an advocacy piece. So we didn't write that to convince you that these are all the right answers. We wrote out the surface of the issues and focused the discussion for council. So that's what we have in draft. In that draft, we say 10, five ward councilors, five at-large councilors. You may think that's too many or not enough? Interested in hearing your opinion on that. Council has a whole bunch of committees. And what we've got is collapsed those into three standing committees, again, in the draft. Council appoint ad hoc committees, or the mayor appoint ad hoc committees by action of council, if and when they feel that's necessary. But right now, the only committees we're including as named committees are economic development, finance, rules, economic development. Rules committee, just like the state legislature, where if you've got a draft bill, it goes to that committee first before it gets to full council. And they do that, that building work is sorted through the law, current legislation for the full council. In the 1911 charter, there are 84 separate numbered paragraphs enumerating what council may do. And if you've taken the time to read all 84 paragraphs, it is a quick tour. So quite easy, a tour through early 20th century American government. There are unconstitutional things in there, there are property requirements, there is ripe with errors and problems. I'm sorry, that's not fair to the people of 1911. All right, all right, 1911, but for today, it's not, it's just not right. And why do we say that? Well, because there are a couple. First of all, if you list 84 things that the city can't do, and they want to do number 85, there's a theory of law called, if you list 84, and 85 is not in it, you don't get to do 85. I forget the Latin, Jerry can remember it, but there's Latin going in. The state code already gives all the powers the city has. And West Virginia, by the way, for the most part, we can only do what the state code allows us to do. I shouldn't say for the most part, actually, that's the fact. The home rule or not, constrained by state code. So why would we list 84 things? Some of which are either redundant or obsolete. Instead, we say, the council has all the authority, the state government is given. Or we decide the council by state code. The mayor, right now, the mayor's term is two years ago. In the draft, we're proposing a four-year term. And what I've found, if I could just share a little experience, not as, again, not as advocate, but as experience, is the cities that have two-year terms, and Morcatown is the only one now I can think of, class three or larger that has two-year terms. I might have missed something. But they're going away from it now, because they realize two years is not enough time for somebody to get their feet on the ground and understand a $5,000, $5 million enterprise, constrained by more laws than you can imagine, federal law, state law, this charter. So we think four years makes more sense for the city and for the stability of the government. In the 1911 charter, as in this draft and in our discussions, we continue to call the mayor, designate the mayor as the head of government. He is, in fact, or she, is the CPO of the city. The administrative authority. We'll talk about what that term means, and it's a very important term, as we discussed on the city charter. In the old charter, he can only vote, the mayor can only vote, in case of the time, we continue that precedent. He is a member of the governing body, which is, he's kind of people here. But he's a non-voting member, and the only time he votes is if it's hot. So how does the mayor influence the governing body? He sets the agenda, he presides at the meetings, he appoints people to committees, or she, I apologize for the current, the mayor does all that. The mayor's called out as the supervisor of the primary staff. So he is the immediate supervisor of those primary staff officers in the city. And again, a significant task for the mayor to not fund and not pay people to volunteer and serve on subordinate city boards, planning commission boards, you know them all, and there's a lot of them. And not less people helping to volunteer to do it. That's the mayor's job under this charter draft. So those are the council and mayor issues. So I hope we agree, significant is, how do we construct council? How many, how fluid are they represented in the mayor's term? I think that are two big changes that are contemplated by this draft. So with that, does anybody have anything to add? I'll pause. I'll turn this around again and look forward to anybody's comments about. Other mayor, I'm conscious.
My name is Phillips Coulson, 220 Sylvester Drive, Hopkins. One of the questions I had with regard to the election of the council members, five being at-large and five being as they are now, would that potentially cause one ward to have more representation than the other? Whereas, I mean, first ward, which is where I live, is a relatively large ward. So if you have a council staff with our, you know, a majority of our at-large members from first ward, and then they are elected by the at-large citizenship of the city, there could still be some, I guess, quid pro quo. So what was the rationale behind that or the thought process behind it?
Okay, I'll go ahead. Answered. Great question. Also, we can put a cap of no more than two per ward or three. We can put a cap on that like that. I might be getting off base a little bit, but I know some cities, you know, you're a first ward, you go for your first ward councilperson. However, when we bury on council here, let's say Water Plank, every councilman's going to bury on, should you be allowed to go for every councilperson? And just be a ward councilperson? So that's a good question, too. I think with five at-large, maybe have a cap where you can't have more than two or three per your ward. That's my opinion. Yes, sir. Got four there, if you want?
Yes, sir. I have to get some complete answer. Do you have any more questions?
No, I haven't. But your hypothetical is absolutely correct, sir. Could, the way the draft is now, could be five at-large along the first ward. The council discussed that at some length, and I ended up with the mayor. I mean, I guess, you know, the same way with, I mean, with your rationale, the whole respect, you know, with your rationale, the, it's the same way the state legislature. You know, I represent, I elect two representatives, in this case, Bill Martin, the state officer, and they make laws for the entire state. Their job is to make the best decision for the district and I do it. Whereas if I'm a first ward council member, I'm going to make the decision that's best for my ward.
You, I'll ask you a question. Do you feel like you should have it right? When it comes to how the council works for all of them, just once for your ward?
I feel that if it's, I think there should be more appointed representation. So I mean, I like the setup that we have now, perhaps that we're going to limit the number of council members, maybe have one or two at-large. But honestly, I prefer to be having two members forming some order, and as a...
Okay. Thank you, sir.
One of the things that we talked about is that it's the difficulty sometimes to find people to run the reports. So the most important thing that you have as a council member is that they're qualified, and that they care about their city. And that is so important. I'm fourth ward, but I've talked about all the issues that are from all the wards. It doesn't matter that I'm fourth ward. There's very little that specifically concerns fourth ward anyway. We're talking mostly about projects and things that are happening in the city at large. Thank you.
I'm Dave Parker, fifth ward. I made some notes, and I'll just start with this matter of representation of council. I continue to feel strongly that each ward needs to have two people. In Zerbinon Council, with this, largely this group of people, who have had some changes over the fairly short time I've been on, I really have come to value into different perspectives that all of my colleagues are bringing to the table. And I think that we need that variety of perspectives, and that, just that different sense of eyes and ears and everything to make the best decisions that we can for the city. I think if we go to less than one, you know, ward-related council there, very possibly, that we're going to have under representation, I just do not feel like that is really going to be the best thing for all of us as citizens of this city. And so I was strongly, I strongly support your position on that. I think it's, to change that is both unnecessary and unwise at the present time. And then on a couple other points that were brought up here, y'all didn't answer yet, you're right, on the committees. I looked at the standing committees, and I brought this up before. But we were just trying to learn more about this process and working with Mr. Trango, which is really, by the way, been extremely good. The virus got in the way of a lot of this, which is really unfortunate. It's all been out. There's a substitute for face-to-face. But on the standing committees, I will say this, and I will be on the table with my shoe if I have to. Public safety needs to be a standing committee of council. Public safety is probably the single most important and primary function of government. And I would rule, I would rule public safety and health into that. Because whether, and we're not going to have philosophical thing, but I think that needs to be a standing committee. And my thinking is this, we say that the mayor is the direct line of authority with the police department. I don't disagree with that. But as we look down the road, all things being equal, there are going to be times when we have strong mayors, and there will be times when we have a weaker mayor. There will be times when we have a strong council, and times when we have a weaker council. There, we're going to need one to balance the other. We're going to, I firmly believe that we have to have reasonable and thoughtful council involvement in the whole area of public safety. That's another one I feel very strongly. It's, I mean, primarily what we're about is government. I mean, we sit here, we see ourselves just as, as, you know, nurses and educators and whatever, but in this role, we're government. Okay, last one. I do support four years for the mayor. I think every two years is just crazy as a bedbug. And I think it's really impossible to get a complete lack of consistency. And I think that if we are very thoughtful about the people we elect to council, that the council and the mayor can be a good balance for one another. They just have to play the sandbox together. And thankfully, we tend that with fear. When I'm looking down the road, and you don't know it's going to be 1915 or shit now. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, councilman. Here's our councilman, Ron Chalmers. Yes, sir. Question?
Mike, I was in... Where is safety committee being done at present?
What do we do at present?
Is there a stand-on committee for safety present?
Yes. Yes.
Yeah, because I think we need to get it through committees. I mean, I thought, we got too many committees, and man, we don't get nothing done, I feel. And yeah, I do understand your concern with safety. It is highly important. I thought safety was one of the three standalone committees. That's proposed.
Mike, I'm not, I don't think that you would really go...
Okay, right now, safety has a term committee?
Yes.
And a proposal is, we're not going to have a term committee?
Well, there would be, there would be those three standing committees. It is possible, as noted in there, to establish other committees. But I would like to be assured of the existence of a public safety committee as one of the standing committees. I don't think that should be discretionary.
I find it.
Yeah. Yeah. It should, it should absolutely be a standing committee of council.
It just appears sometimes from outside, like in the... That as residents, if we don't get involved in the committee process, we get lost. Because we can go to council meetings, and yeah, I know we can get involved in the process. But I just felt we had two committees. I mean, I'm an accountant, I've been for 35 years, and I've worked with various corporations and nonprofits, a lot of them, and most companies probably only have two or three committees. Most corporations, I mean, around here. Yeah, safety is definitely probably number two, finance is always number one. Yeah, I don't disagree with none of your comments. I was just, I'm not sure of how our structure is with safety now.
And I would say that finance is number two. We place so much emphasis on that as number two. The job of finance is to support the other functions. The job of finance is to support the other functions.
Uh, yeah, and I agree with that, because the accountants and safety, it's all the time.
That makes it number two. So, so that we have a coherent way to go about these other, these tasks for the city. That's what finance does. Um, it's important, is, it's importance, is as, um, an enabler, if you will, in the best sense, of good government. So, it's number two for me.
Okay. I know.
Okay, real, real quick, we have, the other committees we have is municipal properties, we have personnel, but, uh, you're right, public safety is very important.
And yes, uh, personnel, uh, I mean, that, that one needs addressing in the new charter and then HR policy, uh, it's just a big liability.
Yes, sir. Okay. I go, okay, right, I go to Councilman Chalmers to speak about this, and you're next, sir.
Yes, I'm Rob Chalmers, first ward city councilman. I just wanted to make a point, and so everyone is clear, I guess, going forward here.
You still have the silverware?
I'm sorry, I thought it was that better, okay. Um, the proposal that's being presented here with the slides and, you know, the, what's been drafted and presented as a, I guess, draft, charter changes are in no way, at this point, supported by council, endorsed by council, just sort of, as I understand it, talking points for us to discuss. So, you know, when something's being presented here, I don't want anyone to have the misconception that this is what council wants, or it's what council is doing, or what council is planning on doing. I just want everyone to understand, just sort of at the outset here, that these are ideas that are being discussed, floating around, and I don't think anyone, I certainly haven't made up my mind with respect to what I would see done with the charter, if anything. So, I just wanted to make that point clear before we got too far out of the meeting.
Sorry, there is, sir, sorry. Um, my name is Early Woods. I live in 522 Davis Street, uh, in Porta Five. Here, my question is in reference to what we're speaking about, going to, are we meeting at 10, um, city council meetings, but putting a cap on how many council meetings, uh, how many council members do we need to work? That would be, uh, uh, depending on workers that have open, because we have a cap. So, we could, uh, give a two-per-ward council, or two-per-ward working, or ten cap or something like that. Correct? The one?
And you're exactly right. You know, 10 councilmen, uh, okay, let's say you have five from each ward, then the other five's at large. I guess, and you're a fifth ward.
Correct.
It would, you, you wouldn't want six, six councilmen in fifth ward and one councilman versus two, four.
For clarification, what I'm saying is, if it is open for the five city council seats, you would not be able to cap on how many council seats can be given, if you wanted to reward, or would not be considered open?
You, you have a point there. And, and I'm, and like, uh, Councilman Chalmers says, that's just not, yeah, I don't support that, that's what's said.
So, and, and I was, that was my, um, my question for you. If we're going to cap it, really wouldn't be a good, I just want to clarify this in that.
Okay.
But the re, what I wanted to talk about was also looking at some of the tenancy council members. But our charter currently says that we can have no less than three, and we can have no more than seven. So, one of the talking points that I would like to discuss is waiting until after the 2020 census, because what we've already heard discussed today is ward one is a large one. And what the charter currently says is that the number of wards, um, cannot be reduced below three or increase above seven in number, and shall be made as nearly equal in population as principled. So, my question for you, or the entire board, is why are we not waiting until after the census for 2020 to look at either going to the five or looking at changing the way we elect, uh, board members? And, um, the other, uh, point I'd like to put is if we do go to seven, which would decrease the size of a ward, which means the city council could focus more on their particular ward, and we could go to three at large. Right now, we have three committees, which is your financial rules and your economics. Uh, three at large could be ahead for each one of those, so that we can make sure that that city councilman that's at large is truly qualified to chair that particular ward or that particular committee.
Yes, sir. You're raising good points, novel, in a council meeting. And again, that's why we want the public input, and what do y'all think would be the best for us to do in the city charter?
Um, and, uh, this is for you, you were just talking that, um, these are all just talking points, so the, the reason for the reform is for us to be kind of hit that council or, um, legal, in our product. Um, is there a date that we're looking at trying to get this being ratified or in the charter for the city?
To my knowledge, no. And I, and I think that's, uh, I think it behooves us to have sessions like this where we can get input, um, and to a point I made at an earlier city council meeting, but it seems to me that we would be all be better off to be doing this in a top, you know, have some good hanging over our head. So, I don't think there's any problem.
And, and it isn't that aspect, it's, I was just recently invited to, I mean, I was just at your forum meeting, and at that meeting, one of the topics that was discussed is that this is something that we could physically see in October or in November, where the general populace, uh, Elders has no idea what we're looking at. Because as of Thursday, the first time I saw, we think about the charter.
Yeah, there is no deadline, artificial or required deadline with respect to meetings.
Right. Thank you. It was comfortable.
So, um, to, to agree with him, which I would stand with the council, I agree with most of your comments, uh, I am against five at large, but it creates a, a serious issue that could happen, uh, with government pendulum swings left to right, you never know where you're going to land, and you don't want to create a situation that could cause mistakes. But my, my question is about the, um, uh, wards. Okay, down in section 107 in your draft, and which we all understand is draft, the bottom paragraph says that the city council may change at any time, the number of wards to three, increase to seven. I don't think anybody would disagree that there might be reasons that that may need to be done. What's the criteria to be true to that? Because there's no question, it just says, uh, maybe change at any time by the, by the council. So, um, the council gets an idea, is it going just to go to six wards?
Yes, sir, the criteria is a majority vote of council, whatever they need, it is a vote. It'll be a public vote, but certainly it's a vote.
But shouldn't, shouldn't it be triggered? Okay, so, so we redistrict on a state level, and our districts get redistricted by the time, and hopefully anybody would disagree with a ward being redistricted based on population or growth. It could be increased, and I'm pretty sure when the 20 census gets out, the 2020 census gets out, there's going to be a lot of people shocked about how much population Elders has lost. So, that may be a reason to track the four, because it's based on the census. There's, there's no criteria in the state why the council should even take that up. Okay, 'cause, um, I'm not going to pick anybody, but I'll pick on Rob, because Rob, Rob actually made this time, so. Um, so he gets, he wants to change the wards, and he puts, he tries to get it out for discussion and council, and you guys decide to do it, because he brought it up. But shouldn't, shouldn't it be a trigger? Shouldn't it be a trigger? We have triggers, our, our state government and our federal government to redistrict.
We should redistrict. We should redistrict population. It always will be.
It doesn't say it.
Yeah. Thanks, Chris.
Think for a second, all right? Each council member should represent the same amount of people. We have changed the wards in Eldons in my 43 years of being involved in city one way or another, about four times. Three I know of for sure. And it always is first ward, it's readjusted, because first ward is the largest ward, okay? Now, second ward is going to be a very large ward, so we have to start readjusting it. Each council should represent the same amount of people. And I, I remember on your charter, it says something to that effect. I believe, I guess, I believe you're right in all terms.
Yes, sir. The state code provides rewards and boundaries to review these steps, so this is also compromising. But I'd pass over your, uh, uh, comments, um, to index or to put some criteria to trigger. Maybe it's every census, maybe it's every dissent in all censuses, you know? But all of your debates, we're going to consider. And I still point.
Thank you.
And I agree with you, four, ten councilmen, one ward, you know, that's two big four. That's my, my vote.
I, I, I tend to, I tend to go with that, because it gives, it gives a more equal representation and a, and a winner of voices as a whole, but you have to have representation. Address Mr. Bartlett, and something, Mr. Bartlett, because I think that large candidates can be helpful. And it's not about ward being represented for the sake of the ward being represented. There, a councilman at large, it's harder for them to reach 5,000 people, but it's easier for you to reach 1,000. And you're going to hear that voice, and, and you're going to hear your voice. And when you get through, maybe the voices that the council hears, the whole seven out of those people hear the same thing. But one councilperson at large may not hear that. And that, 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 right now, uh, the wards do each other's thing, is it more fair, more representative, and it gives the, the constituents a better chance to have a voice. Uh, there's sometimes, you have to be absent from a meeting, so the other council member that is pointing towards there, and then there is situations that that can occur. So, I'm now strongly consider, or is council to consider not changing that law to five at large? That all, but I'm not.
If we're going to have a, in case we have, we just, that's, that's the end.
Okay, yeah, Mr. Hartman, you raised a good point. I know I've been on city council four terms, two different wards, and it's always good to have another councilman with you when you want to try and get something accomplished, you know, two, two from your ward in that committee. I, I think, and I would say the same, two councilmen from the ward might agree, they, they may be staying on for the size. And, and that's happened too, quite. Plus. Yeah, okay. So, you did your fair system. Okay. Yes, sir, thanks.
Mr. Bell, I'm here, I'm very welcome. Um, so, something that I also noticed that had not been mentioned, uh, was term limits. I know, uh, you mentioned it's kind of hard to, to want to run for council, but, um, there's also something to be said for, uh, moving to the federal level for sure, and at the state level, and so on and so on and down. You know, people who are involved in the government for too long. Um, so, are there any thought or any discussion with regards to, I know we're changing the term of mayor potentially from a two-year to a four-year, what about term limit on how many times the mayor can run, and so on, for a council?
Now, last council meeting, I went ahead and spoke, I believe, in term limits. I think each of us has a different opinion. I think two-term limit, and you're right, I feel, this is my personal opinion, our country, our state would be in better shape with those term limits. And, you know, of course, I'm not here about politics, but, you know, I've done my terms. You know, me personally, I believe in term limits, but that's something, that's why we'll get the public input, see how the public feels about that. Yes, hold on here, Mayor. You're going to hear a lot of different opinions, and I respect everybody's opinion.
Well, absolutely, I'm not, why would I have this?
We live in a small town, and, um, I have actually been on council, um, 13 years. And I want you all to know that I don't represent just people in my ward. I do not. A lot of people call me, a lot of people have gotten to know me, because I've been on council for a long time. And also, I know a lot about what's going on in Eldons, a lot. And I find it to be to my advantage to be able to make better decisions for you guys, because I have been on council that long. Carmen Matheny, how long?
One minute.
Yeah. He's a wonderful councilmember, and you guys have good representation. I cannot see, um, banning people from being on council, because they've been on there too long. I do agree that let, state legislature can be a problem, because they're getting reined and they're, you know, we don't make any money, this is not why we're here. We're here because we care about the city and you guys. That's it. Thank you.
And just to clarify from my statement, I certainly wasn't discounting any of the service that you all have provided to the city in any way. I just was making that point that, um, you know, that sometimes, regardless of the level of government, whether it be local, city, state, um, county, that there could be the potential for someone to be involved for too long. Um, some people have, you know, good, good intentions for being involved in politics and in city government, and some people have the opposite. And sometimes you don't find that out until they've been elected over and really.
And thank you, sir. And I guess, and I do respect Marilyn Carmen's opinion, and they have done great, they represent the whole city, but you raised a good point, 10, 15 years from now, we might get a council person that just, I don't know, but I'm good with unlimited terms also. So, Councilman, uh, Lady Williams likes to say a few words.
In relation to term limits, I was on council 13 years ago, and on this council, Carmen's the only person who's still here. So, I think term limits kind of just create themselves in, in our city, because I, you know, like I said, Carmen's the only one, and everybody else is the same from when I was on council the first time. So, they kind of created themselves. But if we see a situation where that's not happening, then, then maybe future councils could take that into consideration. But, but right now, I think it just kind of makes itself happen if this council turns over. And I did want to, one more thing about, um, my thought on standing committees. Um, I think the council needs to stop and think about what functions will the city council have to deal with, no matter what's happening in the world. You know, 15 years from now, 30 years from now, the city will still have employees, it will still have properties, it will still need to provide the safety of citizens. So, I think thinking through things that will not change are, are the direction we need to go in creating our standing committees if we're going to, to define any within the, within the charter change.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, sir.
Please, really, again, um, I do have a question. If we do go to the five at large, what is the plan right now to phase out? When would the elections be held for those people? And how would they be elected? Because as I understand now, each two, every two years, five city council members come up. So, when would that at-large, uh, go into effect? If we do go to that form of board?
Thank you, sir. With this excellent question, we talked about a rough day to face it, and then we realized, until council decides about ultimately the objective, we can't do that for phase it, like, uh, the phase we're looking at was over a four sub, uh, a series of elections, two years, uh, the second two years, we could get a council reform, two elections. But really, don't have a plan to share with you in detail until we understand how council wants to handle.
Mike, again, uh, yeah, uh, I just want to thank y'all here for taking the time to run for council, because the city don't get paid a whole lot of money, and you get criticized some, and I appreciate it. I know you all run for public office, I respect it. Uh, I'm not sure, uh, I'm not against nothing with, uh, amount of councilmen, um, not sure what the best scenario is, it kind of depends on what you do with, uh, the mayor and, uh, the finance manager or city manager, too. Uh, I'm not sure what the best, I, I kind of like the idea of five at large, because you might get five better people involved, but I also see the downside that we previously discussed, so, uh, you all just need to discuss it, use your best judgment, because I'm not sure really anyone knows what the best answer is, presently. Uh, I'm not against city manager for my government, um, I feel we don't have the ke-. Uh, I'm not against city manager for my government, um, I feel we don't have the accountability in city hall right now for some, uh, reason, and I'm really not sure, and it's just my opinion. Uh, I don't know why, it seems like, uh, the ball's getting dropped somewhere, uh, between council and, uh, the five administrative officers, and then getting down to the, uh, supervisory level in each department. Um, it seems to me, uh, just, uh, I'm working with the county and going to board live board meetings in my life, and all kinds of stuff like that, um, that possibly, uh, we're, we're missing an accountability link between, and I'm, I'm not saying this negative towards anyone, it's about position, um, we're missing accountability link between the mayor, uh, and council and administrative officers, or we're missing the link between that administrative officers and the supervisor. I mean, it just seems like accountability is going downhill somewhere, and it causes the believer out, you know, and I think also, but it's all my opinion, uh, because I'm on the outside looking in, and I haven't done an honor compilation, so it's hard to really form a, a true opinion as to what's exactly happened per accounting standards and political processes and operation of city. You all are trying your best, I don't doubt that, and I appreciate that, and I respect that. Uh, I'm just trying to help. But to get back to the charter, um, we need to assign authority to, I think, the administrative officers, or at least you all think about that, and I like the strong man scenario, where someone has to pick up that authority, the city manager, um, city clerk, something.
Can I, can I give this brief?
Yeah.
Okay.
I, I did want to say, before we get to the last topic, which a gentleman, um, has already, uh, introduced, you know, the question is, well, what do you fix and what's broken? Why, you know, why, uh, do anything? Well, I, I think I, I speak for council, I certainly speak for myself in that good enough is never good enough. Just because everything's okay doesn't mean that things can't be better. We're about improving, it's not about the status quo, it's about understanding how we can do better. And these eleven elected officials behind you want nothing more than to understand how we can do better, and how we can implement changes to make things better for Elkins. So, so why do it? Because we're obliged to, because our job is to make things better. So, uh, as a gentleman led into an excellent introduction, by the way, on the former government issues, which is the last topic we'll discuss, there's two critical, critical definitions to understand here. The first is the governing body, which is either the mayor, council, or council. So, uh, uh, unfortunately for those of you on council, you can't get out of it, you are the governing body no matter what, that's what the state code says, in such state one two that I cited there for your convenience. So, in our model that we're, that we're proposing, and actually the way the city operates now is the mayor and council together are the governing body, but the mayor's not a full voting member of that governing body, as we've already discussed. The second, I think, is, is the white center of the question of how we organize the government. Who is the administrative authority? Who is responsible for conduct and management affairs of the municipality? Responsible to whom? The city council. Who answers the city council to accomplish the tasks and goals that city council sets? That's the administrative authority. So, uh, those two definitions are critical as we understand, um, and again, as you see, they're straight out of West Virginia code, so we need to clearly define for our constituents and for anybody else interested in how we're governing ourselves, who is the administrative authority? How is it that everybody controls? So there are four general plans out of the state code, and as we talked about earlier, why do we want to conform to the state code? Because we want to, uh, be understood and to participate in development of the body of law and expertise around local government. So any one of the local governments I work with in the state, which is virtually all of them, um, understands and recognizes these four categories, straight out of state. So the first is a mayor council plan, which, which essentially, although we don't say it in the nineteen eleven charter, because there wasn't really any of this in the state code then, this is the, what we're operating under here in Elkins. You see the voters elect a mayor of council, um, and that mayor council's chair of both governing body, administrative authority. So those five, uh, uh, functional areas, that what I call primary staff in the city, report collectively to both mayor and council. Well, see, now, it's important to remember, council only acts and may only act when a quorum is convened, and they take a public vote. So when a quorum of councils not convened, who speaks for the city? The mayor. So that, that's the administrative authority of the city, because the governing body is not convened. The only way the governing body can act is through a public vote.
Is this the current type we have right now?
Yes, sir, although, as I mentioned, although we don't define it in, in the nineteen eleven charter, this is essentially the model, and subject to objections of council, I think this is the best description of the four options we have, this is the closest one for us. So, uh, my background, before I became a lawyer, I was an army officer, and I learned in, in both at, uh, at West Point and also in the Commandant General Staff College, the idea of unity of command, that, that everybody needs just one boss. So that's a little weak here, as this gentleman's perfectly pointed out, we've got, you know, it's functioning, it couldn't function better, maybe if we paid a little more attention to unity of command, which some of these other models do with threats. The next model, just for multitasking, is a strong mayor. And you can see, uh, those, those cities that I mentioned are cities that use this plan. Uh, the voters, again, both directly elect the mayor and council, the mayor is the administrative authority, you know, in, uh, Beckley and Fanfield, the mayor's a full-time employee. Some cities have strong mayor, uh, uh, Westover, one of my clients, the mayor's a full-time employee, and the administrative authority, he's the direct supervisor, you can see, of the department head city staff.
But who's like, uh, pulling this right now?
No, the mayor's elected by, who's my voters?
In that city, which right?
Yes, sir, those three cities directly elect their mayor.
Does anyone have a mayor that's appointed?
No, not unless there's some extraordinary circumstance, every mayor's elected. So that's the second of the four options, which some would put to the weak mayor, the strong mayor, the next option, now we're introducing the idea of the city manager to be the administrative authority. In this case, which is, I followed in, in this, in these three larger cities, North, Central, West Virginia, the voters elect the council. The council elects the mayor from amongst its members. And that's the governing body. The council also hires the city manager, the city manager, you can see, is the administrative authority, and then supervises the department heads, the daily conduct of the city business. And the problem with this model, from my perspective, if I could just editorialize for a minute, is the voters never get to endorse the mayor. And the mayor comes out of the second, collided, if you will, election. And that attenuates the power, the powers of the majority, uh, uh, the authority of the mayor, because he's not been endorsed by the entire, he or she has not been endorsed by the entire city. I think it's problematic, and if you're fair for this model, and you want to make a comment if you're fair for this model, please address that issue as well. There's the final model, which is the mayor manager plan, um, you can see the cities, uh, all three of those cities, by the way, are flourishing over this model. Uh, you can see the voters, again, elect the mayor and council, the council's the governing body, the mayor's the president of the council, presiding officer of the council, the manager of the city is the, uh, administrative authority. So the difference between this model, which is looked at significant, is the voters are endorsing the mayor. So the mayor has that power. In my hometown of Morgantown, we struggle with this, because the mayor's elected by council, and there are other large institutions in my, in my town, I imagine, that have a lot of cool, and the city can't, can't stand up to the president of WVU or the CEO of WVU hospitals, because this guy is kind of privately elected, he or she's not elected by the city as a whole. So again, I'll stop there and editorialize it. This model fixes that problem, the mayor's directly endorsed by the voters.
But in this model, what power does the mayor have?
In this model, the mayor doesn't have, uh, he's only a member of the city council, the presiding officer of city council. And in, in the, uh, charters that I've worked on, uh, we have made the mayor the city manager's supervisor. The city manager needs a boss too. So she or he would report on a daily basis to the mayor. Why the mayor? Because again, council can't act unless it's convened in a public court, so that city manager needs a boss, everybody needs a boss. Um, and that city manager's boss on a daily basis outside of council is the mayor, the mayor answers to council.
Sir, did the Mrs. Mayor, uh, here, mayor mean the same, but the mayor basically having the same authority as what we have president?
I'll, I'll let, I'll let the, the city staff answer, I think that's right. Now, the mayor, and if you go back to the law that we, that we showed for Elkins, you can see in this case, the mayor and council together are supervising all these primary staff members, now go back, go four years ago, just look at it. In this case, the city manager supervises those, or department heads, is the administrative authority.
Yes, sir, our council is going more than your administration.
That's why your, all your council, this is the hardest working council I know of, really, I can't, I'm not saying that they make, sort of make these people feel good, I really don't know of another council that has that many committees, that many meetings, or puts that much work into governance, uh, that these people do. So praise and compliments to them, lots of respect, but the question is, can we sustain that in twenty years, in fifty years? Uh, that's, that's a challenge. So those are the four forms of government in, in our, to contemplate, I don't mean to suggest these are the only ones, the state code doesn't say who wants to pick one of these four, you can hybrid, you can make up your own. Uh, there is, I think there's another option, you run the city by a committee, which essentially is what you're doing now, it's commission-type government, like the county has. These are the four predominant used, uh, models, uh, straight out of state code, and I'm happy to answer any questions or observations you have about, we've done a lot of work, uh, the council suggested, requested about cost of city manager, of tenure of city manager, so I think we've got a pretty good idea of that, and if I could, you know, I'm happy to answer any questions you have about that research as well. Yes, sir.
So you talk about the cost of city manager, so, so what are you selling that with the budget? How many is it? Four?
Okay, the, the question is, to share, if I can carry an, an objective, if I get this wrong, the gentleman's asking, uh, for me to share that, uh, research we have, I think it's online, or if it's not, it's, it is close to online, but what we have found, uh, and, and these are numbers from West Virginia cities, so we're sure, and they've been verified, and I'm just, I just provided, I'll do it off the top of my head, I think eighty-five thousand is about the average salary of a, of, of city, now, West Virginia, just, just West Virginia.
Eighty-nine.
Eighty-nine, that's from recent times. Um, and the, the tenure, you know, we struggled with the tenure because the averages can be deceptive, for instance, you say, how long has the city manager of Morgantown been in, in her job? Well, a few months, but forgotten former was there for a few decades. So what we did was we provided the council with a tenure research report that was prepared by some academics, so they, they see now, um, generally across the nation, what city manager tenures are and the impacts, you know, what makes tenure longer or shorter for certain city manager. So we think, if I can share just a process, um, and again, this is just a, a meatball idea, that, uh, looking at city staff today, and rearranging, if you wanted out of city manager, I think we're talking between, you know, a hundred, a hundred and ten thousand dollars recovered, staff changes, the personnel, the labor additives, you're in that ballpark, don't hope into that, because there's no way to actually calculate it until you have applicants and candidates, um, but we're talking about it, but an investment, how do we value the return on the investment? Very difficult to do. I mean, we could talk to all these cities and see how they're running, and see those cities that are flourishing, or see the cities that are struggling, I'm happy to share anecdotes in that part, of the return on investment calculation to be objective and to be empirical is, is our capital intensive, is a difficult thing to do. So I'm happy to answer any questions, or, um, go ahead and take comments on the form of government.
Okay.
I can't have electronic lights tonight. That's why he's bad.
And not being sure that to happen, I apologize. So my question was, when you said, you said you gave what the cost of city manager would be, but how many overall positions are you going to need? Is he going to need assistant and secretary?
Well, well, again, that's a difficult, uh, problem of, of figuring out the cost, and we can say, uh, we should guess, no, they don't, we don't need to add additional administrative employee, um, we have that capacity now, or not, now, this, this is a very difficult analysis to make, and we could make some assumptions, if you like, you know?
You can make some pretty solid assumptions, because first of all, you can take away, and, and let's just assume that you, if I can say the manager has the eight, nine years of experience, it's, will be ninety thousand dollars. When you get your employer match for your social security and fight there, that's a, that's a percentage calculation, so based on ninety thousand dollars, that would be six thousand eight hundred eighty-five dollars that the city has to come up with on top of the nine. Then you got your workers' compensation rate, I was a little stunned how low it was, but since I run a business, the workers' compensation rate for West Virginia happens now, so it's kind of minimal, it's a hundred and eighty dollars, so it's not a lot. Then you get into, you gotta have benefit, I, I'm very sure there will probably be health insurance, possibly life insurance, I mean, you go onto the labor statistic era for West Virginia, and, and nationally, they, they throw out some figures, West Virginia's around seven, eight dollars an hour. So you've got figures, pre-stair is another sixteen thousand dollars. Of course, the city manager can't do the job without a vehicle, right? Pretty hard for him to get a function unless you provide a vehicle, so conservatively, if you do it by lease, you can save four dollars an hour for the year, and that's, that's basically twelve to fourteen thousand miles, gas, tires, because it's leased, your maintenance costs shouldn't be involved, it's a lack of comfort, or you may have to do a general maintenance, so then you're talking, so with ninety thousand dollars, that computes to almost a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars for that one position. You saw an office assistant, just someone, be a general secretary for the person, if you pay them, uh, one-off for West Virginia state government, I use twenty-six thousand dollar figure, by the time you pay your social, your social security fighter, pull your match, um, if you offer them benefits, and of course, there's no cars, so you're looking at forty thousand there. So you're looking at, at just two people, conservative, a hundred and sixty thousand dollars increase in salary, where is the savings coming from? Because again, I think you are going to be shocked when you see the twenty, twenty cents that this population is going back. You might see it moving to different points, I think overall, you're going to be under the seven thousand.
Well, with, with all due respect, it's an excellent analysis, it's a one-dimensional analysis, and it's a three-dimensional question. Uh, the question is, what do we gain by having a city manager? And just do it by budget, by budget reconciliation, as you suggested, we leave out the benefits, how do, how do we value the possible benefits those are? That's a nuance, or a, a subjective analysis of these people have to make, and you can share that with them. Do you see, no, you know, we say, that's all money out, there's nothing coming back in good, so we're just dealing with budget management, or do you say, I don't know?
Well, is that city manager going to have the ability to write grants, maybe help the city obtain grants? Um, what, what, yeah, there could be, if, if, if. What, yeah, there could be, if they pay back, I do agree, okay? But cost and benefit, is it going to be a person from here in communities or they're going to be from outside? You know, I mean, there's a lot of pros and cons there. And I don't like the city manager concept because they're out in front of the council and they only answer to the council. Yes, to us, by representation, but it's hard. If something goes wrong with the city manager project, as I want to know. Then council asks for recommitment, get rid of the person, or we have to go through this process again, because we don't like it.
Okay, Alan, Mike. Instead of yourself, I'm going to play a part. All, what I was wanting to say to Alan is, yeah, I had two Mr. Snacko. Yeah, it will cost a lot of money, I agree with that. But if it costs me a hundred and fifty thousand and it brings accountability and the city saves three hundred thousand, I'm all for it. So like I said, when you, you can't just look at the expense. You've got to look at the potential savings that it's going to bring by having that position also.
I hope you can hear me. I want you to think about something, tell you where I stand on this at this time. Love it. Can you hear me now? Okay, thanks very much. I'm Charlie Frill, I'm representing the executive board, and I'm chairman of finance. I'd like you to think about this in a little different way. And I'm not saying this is the ultimate answer, but let's think about this mayor manager plan. And that's the one I support. I believe that if we were to decrease the number of council people from ten to five. We pick up seventy-two hundred dollars times five right there. If we eliminated the mayor's position, which I believe pays twenty-five. Okay, if we eliminate the mayor's position, that pays twenty thousand dollars, we pick up another twenty thousand dollars there. So by doing those things and electing the mayor from the council at that point. And then maybe giving that person who's going to have a little more responsibility a little more money, not a lot. We've picked up about two-thirds of the amount of money we need. We already have administrative assistants for the mayor. So we don't have to go out and hire somebody else. Now, I think we, being the size of the community we are. We're not going to get somebody that has two years' experience or eight years' experience or something like that, unless we're very lucky. So the amount that we're going to have to pay for the city manager, I believe, is going to be less than the very top number that you're seeing. Now, what that does for us, it gives us, it gives us someone who has accountability for running the city. We, now we have our administrative officers, obviously, right now, and I hope that people are doing a great job. But we have five administrative officers and they really aren't accountable to anybody. I mean, the mayor is mayor and he does a good job. But by putting a city manager in place, you've picked up some HR experience. You've picked up some governmental experience that none of us have. I mean, we're, you know, we come from all different blocks of life. And although we're trying to do the best job we can, we're not knowledgeable about some of the things that have worn on our government today. So that's where I stand. I certainly can change my mind, but I think there's a way to do this. And it will provide tremendous benefit for the city as we run downward.
Mr. Frigino, yeah, appreciate it, appreciate it. What is the difference between this plan that you like and, we'll let it just call the mayor? I mean, do you have, do you not like the strong mayor plan? Do you have a reason for not liking the strong mayor plan?
Let me make sure I understand, when you're talking about the strong mayor, you're talking about electing the mayor by the people? You have to also have the city manager?
No.
You don't want a city manager? Well, I just believe that when you're electing the mayor, and note no offense to Van or any other of our previous mayors, because we've had, we've had good people. I think with the sophistication of running government today, oftentimes, these people don't have the training that's necessary to run a city government. And I think if you're going to take the city to the next level, regardless of what the city shows. And when you're dealing with a five and a half million dollar budget, you need people that are trained to do this. And, you know, we're here to represent the people and what they want to see. But we need somebody with the expertise to tell us, these are the things that you're missing. These are the things that you need to think about. These are the things you need to put in your vision plan. And I just think that's important to do, so. Does that answer your question one day?
I applaud you before everything we've all done. But after what you just said, you just said you're not qualified to run the city government. Because we need to look at somebody that has that HR experience. So as a city council, when we're looking at appointing those five positions. What are we just going to put those five positions on? If you just said that you're not qualified to lead us into the future. Because we don't have the experience in government or in HR. Should our city council become a board that makes a recommendation to a professional team? So we represent in committee? We're working for a recommendation to somebody that knows HR, knows legal. Should we be holding these positions? Would we make the citizens other ones? We're electing you, the city council, to be those representatives. But if you're telling me that you don't have the knowledge in HR, in government. So to make those decisions, why are you hiring those five positions? Who makes the city council who qualifies to hire the city manager? Because we need those HR professionals that go out there and look for their brains and look for their best. And we don't sit on for a second. We need a council that's going to be strong, that's going to say, I've gone out there and I, you know, this is not a full-time job. And I'm making the best decision I possibly can to move Alton's board financially, in safety, in economical world. We need, we need that. But if what you just said is, we're not qualified to make these decisions, which is why we need that HR manager in place. And not every year that we elect is going to have that knowledge. Why are we not just a recommendation to those boards or those people that do have that knowledge?
I don't think we may not qualify if you don't think that they don't have the strength and training. Mike, thank you again. And I think maybe I missed some words in points or something, I'll tell you. I don't mean to say that we are unqualified. But I'm saying when you are a part-time council that have, some of the folks have other jobs, some of us are retired. But you don't, you don't have the wealth of knowledge that's needed to run a government of this size. Now, we have, you know, we've got a city attorney who does a great job. You know, we put together a strategic plan, everything to take us in the future. But when it comes to certain situations where the expertise is needed, you know, one of the things, we don't have HR workers at all. And I'm not saying, and I'm not saying that the city manager can bring that. I think it's important for us to maybe contract for an HR position because we can't afford somebody for it to be. But we need to look at all those different things, and I think the city manager can help us identify. I don't know whether you can explain. But the city manager can help us identify where the weaknesses exist and help us to address those gaps. And then one of the places happening to us now, and I don't mean to be critical of any council people or any of our administrative officers. But I think sometimes we get into situations that we say, my golly, we should have thought of that, you know, two years ago. And here we are, and now we've got to be out. So that's kind of where I'm coming from and, you know. Believe me, I'm not lying all the time, I'm just saying what happened.
I agree with you, strong, you have to have the power. So I agree with you, strong, but if we, let's say, we don't get this, we don't get this, we don't get this. And then we have this, we have this, so we have a chance to adapt, to make sure we don't overspend, square, and use it badly. So like I want, we have a chance to, so we have to, and we have to, so we have to, so we have to. And that's first, to make sure that's something that's valid.
Well, that's your opinion, and I have mine. Well, let me ask you this question. Would you want a city attorney to be elected from the populace? No, no, no. I'm just asking theoretically, would you want to elect a city attorney just like you would elect a mayor? The reason you wouldn't is because you need that expertise. Someone who knows the ins and outs of what they're trying to do. That's my point about having a city manager. We need somebody that has training, that understands what's needed. I'm not saying, you know, I'm not opposed to electing a mayor, I'm not opposed to that at all. But as chairman of finance, we've got him at the biggest price we want to buck. And I believe that my idea is the best way to do it. Now, you know, Jim Miller's a councilman, he's probably two different men, but that's, that's kind of where I am. The city council would have a city manager. Now, that's your administrative officer, that's your administrative officer. Which is a five. Thank you, and I will share the discussion.
First of all, let the city attorney, we let the prosecutor turn the all the time, why would you? So you do it.
Let me answer that, okay? Prosecuting attorneys and administrators are criminal council. The city attorney is the principal legal advisor for a five-point-five million dollar enterprise. I would submit to you that the city attorney's job is much more challenging and specific than prosecuting.
I would agree with that. I would agree. It's a good election. So I'm going to be much for Danny Coaday four eight. It's a smarter process for a little bit, as you've pointed out, for a present place a couple of times. So what formulates a qualified objective? Yeah, if nobody else has any questions, I'd love to hear somebody know.
Mr. Hupman brings up an excellent point. He also shared a petition which, I'm sorry.
This is sort of changing here just a little bit, but just as a way of background. When I was on personnel, when I was chairing a personnel committee, we created the operations manager position in Alton's. And one of the reasons we did that was because we recognized that the mayor, you know, you never know who's going to be the mayor. So they may know absolutely nothing about streets and water systems and sanitation systems. So we created that position so that there would be someone who understood all those things, in charge of those departments. And then the mayor would have to run an department or try to run an department that they didn't know anything of. So I think we've got like the hybrid system that they discussed by having our operations manager.
So Jessica, if you could go back to that, you know, as well, so we can illustrate the council's point. So I think what the council's talking about is that second law for the right operations manager who has a broad, a broad portfolio. I'm not sure he would perform. But, you know, to address Mr. Hupman's question and the other comments as well, so this is the challenge right now. Is we have these five department heads, these five primary staff members, and who do they go to? Who says, here are your goals for this week, this month, this year. Here's the standards I want you to perform to, how does that help you succeed? So who does that would be the mayor right now, or any one of the counselors? And as the council Charlie said, they're citizen volunteers, they're not professionals. They're professionals in this business. And as we've seen over the last couple of decades, there's a whole cadre of professional city managers growing throughout the state and throughout the country as well. We've got significant solicitations from lobbying groups in favor of city managers. None of which we've passed on because they've got a perspective that doesn't include Alton's. But this is the issue that we're, that you've addressed so well. And that we're trying to figure out how to make that. But Mr. Hupman did give a petition and I wanted to, maybe the last slide Jessica, is about the council process. And let me emphasize this council general saying, this is all in discussion. There's no ordinance in front of council right now, there's no action contemplated. And none of them have the ability for their colleagues to move this any further than this discussion. So here's how we've discussed amending the city charter. There are a couple of ways to amend it. This is the, if you would accept the characterization, the short form. If council finds it expedient, they can amend the city charter by ordinance without a referendum. However, if any one citizen objects to that, I think we have some objections tonight, Mr. Hupman. That needs to go then to the more formal process, which includes convening the charter board. Collaborating over all these issues again. And then putting a finished product up to the citizens for a vote. Now, from my perspective, what we're doing now is a charter board. If you wanted to appoint ten people to a charter board, would the ten city counselors be pretty well qualified to do that? It's the same as city government, right? Assuming the motive is to improve the city, which we can all accept, all accept that. Or do we go and construct another administrative authority, administrative board, this charter board, and start all over again? Secondly, anything citizen, anything this city council does with regard to this procedure has to be publicly noticed and publicly voted on. So everybody in the city would have a chance to participate in this discussion. So we are, not just tonight, going forward, providing the public for it. So instead of a citywide referendum on ballot, which is going to cost the city money. Would we not get the same quality of citizen participation by an ordinance process? we not get the same quality of citizen participation by an ordinance process, by this process? That's my thought, is that we can provide the same sort of input, the same sort of citizen participation, without creating a whole new administrative body, without creating a whole nother step or process, including a referendum election. But that's up to you. Every one of you has the power and authority to say, no, I want this to go to referendum. Uh, this gentleman's got a number of people signing saying this needs to go to referendum. Let me say one more thing about the referendum. I've not discussed this with council. This is not an all or nothing thing. You could take some of this and amend it by ordinance, what you may find non-controversial, and have a referendum for, uh, controversial parts, if you think that election, an election in the charter board is what you need to have a good, solid public discussion. I don't see that. Now, I see well-considered comments tonight and with council, a hard work of thinking through these issues. I don't know what, what, what addition, what more a charter board would bring to the process other than talking expense. Um, and likewise, an election versus a public vote for an ordinance, I'm not sure. Again, I guess that's direct democracy. And if you favor that, a referendum, referendum democracy, then I suppose that's your conclusion. Uh, but I see 10 representatives here that listen to their constituents and will respond to any complaints or concerns they have. So I would ask Mr. Huffman and his friends, and anybody else who's against this abbreviated process, to please consider my opinion, my opinion. It's just my opinion, um, and my observations. Maybe this is a better way to go, and maybe we can work this process for everybody to have a say, and council to make a decision, uh, for the city. If not, then it's up to the city council. They can choose to go forward in any fashion that they wish by majority of the public vote. That's, that's where I believe in, Mr. Mayor, unless, unless you have other issues already being here.
This city was incorporated in 1890, it's 130 years old, and the charter written at that particular time, probably not thinking about it. But I truly believe that 10 councilmen mayor, strong council, weak mayor is the way this city should be run, and I want, that's my opinion, okay? Uh, Charlie and I have been best friends for, since we've been on council, and hollered at each other, talked to each other, love stuff, and do their part back now on this. And I think the direction this city needs to go is, yes, we need to improve the charter. We need to take out some stuff that 1890 doesn't belong there. But I still think the best early model is weak mayor, strong council.
Okay. All right. Um, I'll just hit my highlight check there. Yeah, I kind of agree with Carmen too. Uh, I support his thinking. Um, I kind of like what we got. We just got to add that accountability issue in there somehow. Be a strong mayor or, uh, which I guess we're going to add, for keep the same. Uh, could a weak mayor pick up, pay him more money, and pick up some of these duties? Is that a possibility? I don't need to answer that honestly, I'm just going to hit my highlight check there. Uh, five of the four. I don't know, I thought you had that. Uh, there was one clause in the new proposal where it said the mayor would supervise the clerk and treasurer in the current proposed proposal, plus, I got questions about the five administrative officers. They should all be at will, I think. I'm not sure who they should all report to at this present. I don't have an opinion on that. I'd be interested in Carmen's opinion on what departments would, or Mr. Friedel's opinion on who would, uh, report to which administrative officer, uh, department. Um, another thing I got a little concerned with, this, as a citizen, y'all probably get through, is qualifications of, of the five administrative officer. I'm not saying it's a problem, it's, we need to make sure you had that. Uh, we got qualified candidates, and as far as I know, everyone's doing a good job. Uh, I just like three committees, uh, but yeah, I don't have a problem with, you know, the charter deciding to add on committee, and yeah, Mr. Parker's right on safety. Uh, I would put it number one, but it could be. So it finances right there. I just didn't want the city to get bought down to two committees, and it seems to take, um, away from the public voter's input, or, that's just how it appears to me, and it's just my opinion. Could council put in the new charter, um, something like, I've read about some other cities, uh, they could have been out of state, I don't know. Uh, I think they were in state. But some city put a local, uh, person from the local colleague from their city councils, from city council. I don't know if there was, I think there was a point. Could council in the new charter put a representation or council for non-residents, non-voters that have a business or financial interest in the city? Uh, I don't know, state code allows it? Yeah, there's lots of codes when you talk and relax and vote, and just, uh, you know, put people in council. It just seems kind of empty of business to have, you know, if I live in Beverly and say I want to, uh, you know, there's no doubt Elkins is our county city, has a large traffic and a large population. Uh, but if I want to put a business in Elkins, um, it all leads to other issues, which leads to jurisdictional tax, maps, and de-otax and all that. And I just feel if, 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 if we have county residents, I really don't care where they come from, they can be out of state if they want to put a business, or they can live out of state if they want to put a business in our damn town. It could trip into our economy, economy. It just seems like they have their voice. Maybe that's okay. It's kind of, I just sort of appear funny. It don't actually affect me whatsoever. Trying to look out after everybody. Uh, I objected to quite a bit of the sections, uh, not in total, mainly just as a kind of summary, uh, once the details. One of the biggest objections I had was on section 4.09. Uh, had nothing against Tracy. Tracy, you know, fine, uh, as far as I know. It just seems like, uh, we could potentially be giving too much authority to one officer with 4.09. We get concerned if, if one person gives too much authority, and we like checks and ballots. So reading over the PDF of the proposal, that kind of jumped out at me and a couple of county friends. Um, the whole section four actually is kind of, I don't know, has a lot of questions. Uh, I can hit the context real fast if you want, but I don't think we need to do that. Um, I'll just, you know, if you're going to kind of bear with me, I'm going to read my next, make sure I don't miss nothing important. Um, intergovernmental relations, section 1.5. Uh, I just, I feel there should be a check and balance there. Um, sometimes our federal government and our state government gets a little out of life or a little out of filter, and I just don't think our city should just totally bow down to our federal government or our state government. I mean, I just, uh, sometimes I feel the federal government and the state government does not do the best, what's in the best interest for the local community. Uh, section 1.6, residency or voter, I don't really like that either. Uh, that's, that's the one about the board representation from a business or college to get. 1.7 wards. Yeah, I backed up, uh, Mr. Huffman said earlier, I think if you want to change wards or districts, yeah, base it on a, a hard, concrete number that the state or federal government's going to put out like decisions. Uh, section 2.2, composition and election, I'm not sure why I didn't really like that. There was some questions I had about that. 2.8, conduct of business, I would love to see you all, uh, uh, address it, uh, somehow address it so when we do public call man and council meetings, uh, maybe start the next meeting, answer people, or answer right during the meeting. I mean, it, it, it would, it would have helped me last year, I know, and, uh, Mr. Stokes is helping a lot with transparency. I mean, that's really helping me a lot. Section 2.8, actually quite a good ordinance. Um, I would rather see some checks and balance on that as far as barring money, uh, maybe set it at a dollar amount. Uh, I just feel it needs a little more due diligence if we're barring multiple millions versus if we're barring 100,000. Okay, section 3.1, executive branch, well, that's what we can discuss as strong mayor. Uh, one thing about, yeah, about all that topic, um, yeah, it's going to cause to get accountability. I mean, my idea looks like the name, or you're going to need it. But strong mayor or right to do city manager, because we got assigned responsibility to somebody. So I, I don't know, that's still, I guess, really open for discussion, but I'm not sure what the best answer is to that. Uh, Carmen's had it in the right direction, and I have confidence, and you all will, um, come up with a meeting at the public vote. Yeah. Section 3.3, mayor's compensation, uh, I don't like that. I think it should be public information, um, if it, if it was going to be in a new charter, uh, I misunderstood it. And, and one comment about the mayor, yeah, my reason for a strong mayor is, yeah, well, we're going to have to pay the mayor money to make a strong mayor, or we're going to pay ci- uh, city manager. And someone's got to pick up that responsibility to get the accountability. I mean, it's just, it's got to happen somehow. Section 3.7, duties of treasurer, it said there, she's got a lot of duties, a lot of responsibility, and, uh, just make sure we got a check and balance, and I'm sure Tracy will probably appreciate that. Capital expenditure per year, uh, the budget, uh, I feel, I don't know that the charter, maybe, maybe I missed that too, but I feel it should be put on the website too. And I said something about distributing public copies, uh, you know, ageable ages. I would like to see it also added, you know, put it on the website, which I'm sure something will do anyway, but. Section 4.11, public inspection of budget, I just put on the website, it was great. Uh, like I said, 4.9, had a lot of objections there on some of the subsects, and maybe subsection B, uh, my own internal aid there too. Just make sure there's a check and balance. Section 7.4B, shared authority on dispersal of public funds. Not sure why I wrote that down. Oh, okay. Yeah, I mean, I think it should be, it said, uh, shared authority or one person. Uh, I think section 7.4B definitely should be shared authority all the time on public funds. I mean, that's just an accountant's opinion. Um, yeah, uh, you know, back to Mr. Franco, I was talking about standardizing our charter to adopt two-state code. Um, I will say one more caution with that comment is be careful, because West Virginia has a lot of that code, yet hasn't went to the street court yet back then, but there, there's a lot of issues with our state code. And then now, uh, leading me into my other last topic, and Mr. Franco probably could offer some insight on that. Um, and it's kind of really not to do with the charter, but it's to do with operational opportunity. And, you know, uh, the public service district, Slid, Leedsville, Midland, I still have a problem with operating on 1960 something contract with Midland. Um, I mean, I'd just like to see that public service district stuff be addressed in the charter, because I'm kind of tired of our city, uh, picking up the cost of the infrastructure for Midland and Leedsville, and they don't pay their taxes, and they don't vote, and they get a service, and I just, I just really got a problem with that. And it all is a state problem, I know that, and it's a federal problem, because I was on the phone with the Fed a lot. And they know it's a problem, and they don't seem to care. Charleston knows the problem, and they don't seem to care. I know you don't care, that's my question. But what can we do about it? I mean, we got too much infrastructure for our water and the sewer, and it's costing us money. And I'm an accountant, and I don't like it. I just feel we could do better than that. And I want to thank everyone for being my councilman, and I'll work with you and support you any way you can. Thanks.
I just wanted some clarification, um, with regard to the two process, the two ordinance process, and then a public vote for a basement. You used to say a public vote, but you were referring to the, um, ordinance process, and then the referendum, which would be a vote of the citizens, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
So I, I, I agree that, you know, this, this council has been wonderful in many ways. However, um, you've seen the turnout this evening, um, as far as people who are, want to be involved and want their voices heard, whether they're any firm or the opposition. Um, and so that to me, I find a real problem, because you don't know, um, so with the referendum situation, you could have a situation where it's us voting, and the people who haven't taken attention and haven't been at the meetings, um, are also voting, and they vote, vote away because they just think one way or another. However, with the ordinance process, I've done several city council meetings, and I hope we get back to the person meeting soon, um, so that we can continue that, that, um, face-to-face possibility. But I, I've watched public hearings happen, and people express their opinions on certain things, and the council's saying, yes, we, we understand, yes, we understand, and then immediately close the discussion and vote on it and just come. Um, and so that, that's a concern for me as a citizen, because I don't know, you know, it seemed to me for that particular situation, the decision had already been made. So whether I get up here and talk for five minutes or, you know, 50 minutes, it doesn't matter, because it's, the decision has already been made, or there's already been an assumption of, um, an assumption of the city. I know about it, it's Council Chino's point, and if you meant to say... I know it's counsel's point and he meant to say his talking points and I appreciate that, but I would also just like to express my, um, thoughts about potentially pulling off on some of the more detailed discussions at a council level until COVID is at least in a, in a better place. Uh, I know we'll never get rid of it, but at least it's in a better place to where we can have more interaction and, you know, people are less, are less afraid to come out and be a part of, of the, um, of the ordinance process.
And I would like to thank everybody for your time. I, uh, you know, a lot of time that I've put into what you all did. Uh, the general council meeting and we had your committee meetings, it takes time and all of this work. Um, you asked me what I presented, this was the thing, the people I represent, once this was discussed amongst us, some of them work, some of them are older, they're coming for, very busy that Mr. Houghman was talking about. Um, and getting the word out, it's kind of hard. You try to go talk to some people who love, know, stuff, they don't want to, they don't want your votes, they, they don't want a group right now, okay? The, the COVID situation has this country kind of at a standstill. So they're, they're dependent on the inner mountain and not everybody gets the inner mountain, not everybody gets the local news, but most, I think most people do, some of the local news around here, but communication's tough right now. It is very tough. So the people that I talk to, that's some of their concerns and, and they don't want their government to change, they, they want to, they want them able to voice. They might go to the poll to voice their, their opinion on an up and down vote. And it is critical that you guys put a good plan for, for them. That being said, there, there are some things that they have, we've discussed, that they're concerned about. The cost to the city treasurer, you're increasingly criticizing the government. You can give it to mayor, you're cutting up the council people, still increasing the cost of the government to run. That's, that's concerning. Treasurer wants to be. That is, that is where our objection, our objection is. I still haven't really got an answer to a qualified objection. Tell me what was, where does it take place and the process?
Sir, any objection is, is a qualified objection. So I don't know why the state government uses that term qualified objection, suggests that something, imagine, it's not. Just I, I objected this amendment, uh, that we either solve the objection or we go to the referendum. So the citizens have the power.
Because it's capital equals term, the way it's listed.
It is, it's straight on state, not false.
So I, I don't want to take up any more time, but that's the, the twenty-three people that signed that petition while some of them were working, some didn't fill out the areas, was probably, they were over. Uh, I appreciate everybody that's here. Myself, in my opinion now, as a citizen, I'm against the city manager form. I think that the situation is more of a, uh, an HR issue from what we want to work out here. So, so maybe a strong mayor, weak council plan would work or, or maybe council could give the weak mayor administrative authority. And he can spend a little bit less money to get you to the HR person to help him there.
I've stood for a long time, a long time. I said, I had stood for a long time. The mayor's position is not a part of compensation and it has been for the last eight, nine years. It is a full-time position. And we need to have a salary equivalent to somebody to live off of if he wants to be mayor of the city development.
I would agree. Thank y'all for your time.
I have an answer on the county board of election canvassing and redistrict criteria ideas and what I'll do is I'll send that to Jessica Chukel. Can I say that?
Jim, did they actually learn about the board of canvassers?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I was pretty sure it was in the Secretary of State's Guide for municipal elections. As long as you have a separate municipal election, which is what this city does, the governing body, which is city council, is the board of canvassers. That's always how it is. The only time the county commission would be the board of canvassers is if you include your city election in with general or primary elections. So as long as we keep it separate, that's chapter three of the West Virginia code deals with elections and, um...
I, I agree with you, Jerry, but I owe you a citation too, if you'd use yourself on the air.
I'll just try to be quick and, I'll try to be quick and succinct. Uh, my name's Andrew Carroll, I live in one twenty-eight Buffalo Street. Um, so first I want to commend everyone in the process. I know that this has been a long-term discussion that the city council's had for, for many years and I think it's a necessary discussion. Um, and so I want to speak to two things here. So I want to first speak about the mayor manager plan and then also, uh, I just have a couple of thoughts and commentary on the at-large election because I think those positions can present some really interesting benefits, but also have some drawbacks that are worth considering. Uh, so one, I want to speak in favor of the mayor manager plan. Uh, a couple of reasons, I think having somebody that has expertise in government, right? Somebody with like a master's in public administration is qualified to make long-term decisions. And if we're able to make long-term decisions, the city reaps those benefits, you know, now and into the future. And so one example that I think really, um, provides a good reason why a city manager could be a really, like, realistic citizen is if you look at water systems. So municipalities over the past eighty or ninety years have been selling their water below cost. And so then you get a situation we have now where we're in a, in a pinch to really figure out how do we improve our water system? How do we do that on our own and how do we balance, you know, using federal funds and all these other sources to do that? So, uh, having somebody that has the skill to think at a long-term level and think through all these systems and also know the processes through those systems can produce a long-term benefit. So if, you know, in nineteen forty, we would have thought, okay, we have to replace our water system in sixty years and we need to maybe increase water rates now so we have the funding to update our system and to provide, you know, that service to citizens. That's important. I think, see, the other thing, um, that that provides too is sort of a stability in decision-making. So if you have somebody that's knowledgeable, um, that's really a professional at that field, that provides a lot of benefits that an elected person or even a strong mayor really might not necessarily have those qualifications. So I think that's a real strong benefit and I think the other benefit of the mayor manager plan versus just the manager plan too is that I think, uh, you want to have engaged citizens and engaged voters. Uh, so, you know, this is a pretty small crowd and I know that there are a lot of local people, uh, but I think having a mayor or election still and having somebody, I particularly if we don't go with that large representatives, a mayor that sort of is that kind of at-large representative who provides some real benefits to those people and also allow people to be engaged and express their voices. You know, we face some really interesting questions in democracies across the world in terms of, uh, how do we engage voters and how do we do that, right? So many, many systems are looking at compulsory voting, so Australia has compulsory voting, but that's not the world we live in. So, you know, having something that gives people pride and may or they can believe in, those kinds of things, right? Those improve engagement in that mayor really, and I think his man has done a great job, is, is the man of the people, you know? He's there to, to shake hands and smile and do those things. And I think we need a cheerleader for the city and we need somebody who's, who's upfront in that way. Uh, so I think that's a kind of a benefit in the mayor manager plan. And I think it also, again, takes the responsibility of, of high-level decision-making, long-term decision-making off someone who's a temporary fixture, you know? Um, no matter how, how strong a mayor is, they're still temporary. So you want somebody who potentially could have a long-term tenure. Institutions that have people that invest their time and energy into that institution long-term, I think really benefit from that. Uh, no one wants a rotating door of leadership. You want somebody that's strong, that can make those decisions over time. Um, and then in terms of looking at like kind of benefits and harms of, of, uh, at-large, uh, elections, uh, I think one big drawback, and I think Dave really touches on this in one way, um, is you do, you do have potential, and this is, I think, when you look at the literature on the subject matter, this is the biggest drawback because that's sort of, uh, different minority groups might not be, be represented in that. So if suddenly, uh, you know, the wealthiest ward or the, the whitest ward or the oldest ward, which generally those are the people who vote, right? Wealthy white people vote, that's, that's the demographic. You know, suddenly, you know, a particular neighborhood that might be more impoverished or more represented by minorities suddenly loses a voice in that. So I think that's a real consideration when you look at at-large representation. Um, however, on the flip side, I think that there are some, some benefits from having at-large representation and I think the other thing is, is looking at what these issues, uh, I'll hold it for a second. So, so one, I think you can get more engagement, right? So if there are some really good candidates and good candidates who are running a, you know, a really, uh, a positive election, engaging with each other on issues and you have some people who really get out there, um, that could be really great to have that and that would increase engagement and more engagement in our, in our cities is a great benefit to us. Um, secondly, uh, I think the literature suggests that, uh, at-large representatives look more towards long-term projects and look towards, uh, projects and infrastructure that benefit the city at large and not just their particular neighborhoods. So having somebody who can step aside and say, you know, I really would like this to happen on my street, but I know that the, the bigger picture is this, could produce a benefit for the city as a whole, having somebody who's looking with a wide vision versus the, the more myopic vision of the neighborhood. Um, and two, I think, you know, increase equality, I think, I think council, or, um, Juanza really said, you know, it is really hard in small places to get people, uh, to become more engaged and to get, get people, um, you know, particularly, right, getting younger people like me to, to run for office, it's harder, right? We're busy, we're trying to establish our professional careers. Uh, so anything that allows kind of a wider window for people, um, particularly, you know, if one neighborhood's too old and one neighborhood's too young, um, maybe there's four or five people in one neighborhood who are very competent, engaged, have the time and energy and effort to devote, and those people don't have that, that role to play. So I think that's, that's kind of a benefit. But I think when you weigh kind of these, these harms and benefits of at-large representation, it's important to kind of consider those issues on our level and our scale. So, um, and I think, so like, you know, I think long-term projects, I think, and then sort of this, this vision for the city, I think largely our system does that. I think, you know, I think council in general can probably see both this neighborhood and larger visions. So I think, um, sizing those problems, I think looking at issues of minority representation. Um, in other, in other municipalities, that can be a real, a real issue. For our municipality, it might not be as big of an issue. So those are just some thoughts and considerations. But again, I really appreciate everyone engaging in this process. I know it's a difficult process, uh, but it's good that we can have this deliberative dialogue on it. And I think it's also, uh, important that that action does happen at some point, you know? Um, we're, you know, and at least in my belief, and I've always been unapologetically pro Elkins and, and pro Randolph County in so many ways, you know, we're really poised to meet, to do many good things and to have a really great community and a really vibrant community and I think we're working towards that. Um, and, and changes like this are what are going to help us step forward and help codify those changes and push us forward. So I think we have to, we have to take action. Um, and if you want to keep young people like me here, right? I'm twenty-six, I bought a house in town, I'm spending my money here, I've been all my life here. Um, so I want to see these changes because I'm going to live with these changes for sixty, seventy or eighty years. Um, so that's, that's really important to me. So I'm glad that we're engaging in this process and I hope we continue to move forward and take some action. Uh, and I appreciate everybody and I appreciate everybody for your thoughtful commentary. I think you guys have done a great job engaging in the issue. So thanks, everybody.
Yeah, Mr. Franco said, um, you know, we could tell yours city so much if we get through this process and we let you all represent us and vote for us. I'm never against letting the public vote on any issue. Uh, that's just my opinion, I actually like the public vote because that is the most participation in Randolph County that we get as far as we're putting the voters. Um, I'm, uh, I don't know what the best solution is, uh, but if in doubt, please put to the voters, I think, because I just think that would be better if in doubt. And I'm in doubt, I, I don't know what's the best. And back to that young gentleman's comment, yeah, he's, he's exactly right. I've been here, I'm fifty-eight, I've, I've been here fifty-eight years pretty much, don't remember how, but, yeah, the town's a lot different than how it used to be. Uh, in my opinion, it's probably lesser quality. Uh, I called the county clerk, um, August twentieth, there are registered voters in the city, it's five thousand forty-five as of August twentieth. And I was kind of amazed it was that, uh, but it's not your all's fault, the low, uh, the low participation of the public, it's not your all's fault. We need to get better as a public and we need to get better as a city and if we all work together, we'll get there quickly. Oh, and I was wondering what is the expense saved if council does this without putting it to the voters, just approximately?
If we did it in a regular election, if we got coming out for the harsh, well, actually we could, we could incorporate that, um, we would incorporate that process. It would cost a bit of election, it's, it would be around, around eight to ten thousand dollars, so we would incorporate it when we have that issue.
Just very, just wanted to thank these gentlemen for your excellent comments. I'm worried a lot, I take a bunch of notes back. I owe you some information, but I also owe two, one, you know, um, and my email address, uh, if you want to use. Thank you. Well, I can talk a little bit faster, but I'll take advantage of this, before I give the mayor's last second.
We need to address that.
Um, before, before anybody please, I just wanted to provide some additional information that I've looked at already. There's a couple of sites up here with a survey that's been on early, I've heard, seen that, have already, it was up through Wednesday. And the results of that survey were presented to council, they're being, and then the, the board, whether, all the information has been produced, it's out, there is a ton of wealth information apparently, I really have a little trouble with that. Also, if you have any other questions or comments, feel free to direct those to me and, you know, just write, leave a direct comment to the council member, I'll pass it on if something I can answer. I'll be interested, Franco, to help me answer it, but, um, my email address is obviously website, I, I, feel free to reach out to me. If you, you know, there's also always an opportunity, there was a council meeting, um, this nice council meeting on Thursday, it's on our agenda to discuss this, it's in the morning again. So during that public comment here, we have a comment about, we have a council, and that, that is an opportunity to do a first story.
We went to your, we went back to the, 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 the.
Yeah, or, or consider that.
Who, who can, I will be able to, I can invite them to come out and this is a good example. You can agree to disagree, because this is a good healthy discussion. I have to give credit to this council, they worked hard, I got to give credit to y'all for coming out and making them like this. It's good, it's a face-to-face, you know, listen to y'all, I will, this will continue to help with some of the discussion. All right, thanks, get it. I'm ready. Thank you, y'all.